I'd like to call the Maumell City Council meeting to order the first order of business as invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Alderman, or, I'm sorry, City Clerk Clausen to lead us in that.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet here this evening and discuss the business of this great city that we live in. We pray that as we do so, that we'll have Thy Spirit to lead and guide us. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this wonderful community. We're grateful even more for the opportunity to live in this country and are mindful, especially at this time of year, for the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray that Thou would watch over and protect those who fight for and serve this country and protect the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray that Thy will will be done here this evening. We are mindful of Alderman Johnson and his family at this time and pray that Thou would watch over and protect them in their time of need, and we do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will let you know if you're here for the public hearing on the water rate increase, it will begin at 7:30. So after the council meeting, we hope to be done by 7:30, and we will hold the public hearing at that time. Also, I need to let the council know that Kimberly Clark had planned to be here tonight with their industrial revenue bonds, but they ran into some delays on preparing all their documents, and so they will be here on the July 20th agenda. And so we will be seeing them at July 20th. And as we asked at the last time, they will be requesting three readings at that time. Next item is special guests and announcements, and we have Mr. John Kraft with Kraft Veitch and Associates here tonight to present our 2014 audit report. And you were handed, that was passed out at your seats just right before the meeting, and the plan is that we'll give you the next two weeks to look over this, and then we will vote on it at the meeting on July the 20th. But Mr. Kraft, if you want to come forward and present the audit?
Will do that. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank the mayor and Ms. Thompson and all the people at the city that helped us as we went through this. It's a disruption to their day, actually disruption to several of their days, but we appreciate their help in getting this done. As you can see, it's a fairly lengthy report. I'll probably just read the first 60 pages to you.[175.12][175.12](Laughter) There's two letters in the front that will kind of hold off until the last. And what I intended to do tonight is just kind of guide you through what the format is, and you guys will have two weeks to read and enjoy the report, and we can talk to your questions, which is a good point. If you have questions or things that you would like to have discussed in more detail two weeks from now, if you would give those to Tasha Thompson, or to the mayor, or Joshua, whoever, and they can then pass that on to me, and we can be sure we're prepared to talk to whatever you would care to talk about or ask about. Basically, it's laid out. The first part of the report is actually an introductory letter from the mayor and Ms. Thompson, and it contains some financial information that we have looked at and made sure that it is consistent with what's in the report. It's not necessarily audited per se, but the numbers are matched against the audited financial statements. Immediately behind that is a copy of the certificate of achievement that was received on last year's report, and the goal, of course, this year is to achieve that same certificate for this year. It's quite a statement that is recognized certainly within the financial community. If you go to page numbered one, that is our report, the auditor's report, and under the caption, more than halfway down the first page, there is the opinion, which is what we call a clean opinion, which says that the financial statements are materially accurate and fairly stated, and which is the opinion that you would want to achieve. Following that is management's discussion and analysis, which is basically intended to be management's highlights and points that they care to bring forth. Again, it's not exactly audited, but all the financial data contained in here is matched against the audited financial statements to ensure that they're consistent with what's in here. There may be some statistical operational information in here that's not within the financial statements, so we were not able to do that comparison, but we made sure there was nothing that was inconsistent with the audited statements. The audited statements basically start on page 13 with a statement of net position, which is similar to a balance sheet that you would have seen in most businesses, as opposed to what's on page 15, the balance sheet, governmental balance sheet, which does basically is similar to page 13, other than it does not include the fixed assets, property plant and equipment, and is in a little different format, which is intended to give you a different slant, but also achieves confusion and misunderstanding to most people. Next page, page 14, is the statement of activities, which you can see near the bottom. It says change in net position, which serves to bring you forward from last year's net position of 45 million to this year's 47.6, which ties back to page 13. There is a footnote when we get to that section that takes the property plant, property plant and equipment off of page 13 and blows that up for you and shows you the beginning numbers, additions, deletions, and brings you to the ending numbers. Accounts receivable on page 13. There's a footnote that expands that a little bit for you and shows you what makes up those balances, and also gives you the allowance for doubtful accounts, which on page 13 just shows it net of that allowance, and the footnote will give you more detail on that. Page 16, it gives you revenues and expenses in a format that's more consistent with what you would be accustomed to, looking at an income statement for most businesses, and it brings you to the change in fund balance, which is on page 14. No, I'm sorry, it's on page 15. So you have 14 that kind of ties to the balance sheet on 13. Statement of revenue expenditures on page 16 relates to page 15. And then page 17 is kind of intended to be a reconciliation of those two, and identifies the things that are included on one statement and not the other. Beyond that, you get into some detail as far as comparing certain activities to their budget, and I would just point out that you can, like page 18, it's talking about the general fund. You can look on each one, and it points out which fund that it's relating to. Sometimes there's confusion because they don't tie back to some of the other statements because it's breaking out each individual fund. Page 24 starts the notes to financial statements. They're basically consistent with what you've seen each year in the past. There is, like I said, a footnote that gives you some detail to accounts receivable, and there's one that gives you some more information on the debt. I'm not going to try to go through all of that. And there's also one that gives you the detail on the fixed assets that we talked about earlier. Beyond that, there's some after page. When you get through the footnotes, then you go back to some more detailed supplemental schedules. Again, they were not necessarily audited, but any information there that we could agree back to the audited financial statements, that has been done to ensure there's no inconsistency there. Page 76 is another report that my firm issues, and it relates specifically to internal controls over reporting and compliance. And as it says in here, we did not necessarily do a full-blown audit of all internal controls, but in the course of conducting our audit, we did pay particular attention to internal controls as they relate to compliance or reporting. And you'll see near the bottom of page 76, the next to last paragraph, we say that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control, and the last paragraph says that we did not find any instances of non-compliance, which is what you would hope to hear. We're not saying there were not any, we just said that we did not identify any in the course of our audit. The next page is 78, and the next report is page 78, which is again where we do do some tests to look at compliance with the Arkansas State Code. We found no instances of non-compliance in the course of doing that. And then the last pages would be where we would point out if we found any significant instances of breakdowns in internal control or non-compliance, and obviously we didn't have any, so there's nothing listed there. The next, these two loose pages, the first single page would be where we would specifically call to the council and the management's attention if any significant deficiencies in internal control. It's intended to be a separate letter, so there's specific attention drawn to that. We did not have any since I've already mentioned that, so there's no, there's a, the next to last paragraph says that. The two-page letter is a required letter to call to the attention of the council any instances in the course of conducting the audit that we think should be brought to your attention. And the first one is talking about estimates, so that you're aware of where significant estimates are made. The allowance for doubtful accounts is a significant one. Useful life of fixed assets is always one that we point out, and then we calculate or test the calculation of the post-retirement benefits. Those are three significant numbers that are estimates. And then the rest of the letter is intended to call to your attention any problems that we ran into in the course of the audit, just to make sure that you're aware of any difficulties in doing the audit, disagreements with management, those type of things, which we did not have any of those. So it's, it's good from the standpoint, it points out to you that we really didn't run into any difficulties or have any situations where we thought the record should be adjusted or corrected in some manner, and management disagreed, and we ended up with some problem, or they made the audit difficult for us and whatnot, and that we did not run into that. So that's a positive letter. There you have it. If you do have any questions at this point, I'd be glad to address that. And again, if you have any questions or whatnot for the next couple of weeks, feel free to run those through folks here at the city, and they'll get with me, and we'll be sure that we're ready to answer those when I come back on, I guess it's the 20th?
20th, yes, sir.
Pretty quick run-through, but...
And the reason we do it this way is this is a lot of information to digest, and we hand it to you five minutes before the council meeting, so that's not fair. So that's why we've asked that Mr. Kraft actually make two trips and present it tonight, kind of give you the overview, and then allow you time to look at it and develop any questions. And we would, if you could, get those questions to us by, you know, give Mr. Kraft a little bit of time other than the weekend before to prepare for that, so...
Please.
He likes to play golf, I think, on the weekends.
It takes me a long time to play.[880.51][880.51](Laughter)
So if we could have them, you know, by the first of the following week or something like that, that'd be great, if at all possible.
That'd be great.
If there's no other questions, we appreciate you being here, Mr. Kraft, and appreciate the audit, and we will be, look forward to seeing you on the 20th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next item is approval of the minutes June 15 regular meeting. The council has a copy of those minutes in their packet. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Motion for approval?
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June the 15th. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have three public comment cards here that are on items tonight. Two of them are on items that are not on the agenda, so we will hear those at this time. And we would ask that everybody limit their comments to three minutes if possible. And we will start with Ms. Shirley Barrow. And please state your name and address for the record at the podium up here. Yes, Mayor?
My name is Shirley Barrow, 52 Zercon, in Maumell.
Okay.
I'd like to request that the council consider a ban on fireworks in neighborhoods in residences in Maumell. This is what my roof looks like now, and my yard, and my residence was like an arsenal on Saturday night. I had to hold my dog, and I felt like I was in Syria. I mean, my representative came and looked at my roof this morning, and this is going to go in my gutter, and then I'm going to have to pay to have my gutters cleaned. So there's several reasons that I think that we should ban fireworks, personal fireworks, in the city of Maumell. I think, I was looking at the news on the way, before I came over, and they were talking about all the stray dogs that happened on the 5th of July because the dogs all panic and jump fences and dig out. The other issue is people who have PTSD can be very adversely affected by fireworks in their neighborhood. I think another issue is litter. My street is still littered with this debris, and the next rain is going to go in the storm drains, and then it's going to go into our lakes and streams. So I think the litter is another issue. And then injury to children, which parents make a decision to allow, but the doctors in the emergency room would probably tell you that you should never allow your children to have explosives. So I can't think, I can think of a lot of reasons to ban fireworks, but I can't think of one reason to allow it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrow. We appreciate you speaking. Next public comment card I have is from Mr. Leonard Unruh.
Leonard Unruh, 68 Blue Mountain Drive. It's on the power outages that we've had the last two Fridays. I'm not pleased with Energy. I'm not sure what the council can do. First, the Friday, the outage on Friday, June the 26th, I called Energy at about 6:30 shortly after it happened. First time out, restored was 9:30, called again, 10:30, called again, 11:30, called again, or not called again, it rolled over to midnight. Last time they called, it was noon on Saturday. Power was restored at 9:46 that night. The other one was July, yeah, July the 3rd. I don't know exactly when it went out, but they said it would be back at, I think it was 8:30. We got it sometime around 10:10. On the one from June the 26th, after it'd gone out and had been out for about maybe two hours, the wife and I drove around looking at, just to see how bad it was. And then on the one on July the 3rd that morning, I happened to get up, my laptop was powered up, our gateway to the internet was, had on battery backup, so I went out to Energy and looked at their website to see where it was. And to me, it looked like the same area for both times. In these areas, some were, to me, seemed like to be an older area, which is where I lived. Some of it was, looked like, I remember as fairly new, and that was the Maumell Valley Estates. Both of them are affected. To me, I think Energy needs, I'm not sure what, but they need to rewire that part of the city and everything. So I'm not sure what the council can do, because I know two of you, I know two of you were affected by it. Correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I'm not sure what you guys can do, but it'd be appreciated if you get Energy to do something.
Well, I will tell you that the June 26th one was storm-related. There was a major storm going through there, and the July 3rd one, they're saying was actually, they think was lightning-related from a previous lightning strike on some equipment that they weren't aware that had been damaged, and then it malfunctioned on July the 3rd at about 5:30 in the morning. So that's, that's the information I have, Mr. Unruh, so...
Yeah. Don't believe it.[1251.81][1251.81](Laughter)
Okay. Okay, that's all the public comment cards I have that are on non-agenda items. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the financial statement review, which will be done at the second meeting of the month. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve all resolutions, or read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Approved. Wow, I'm jumping ahead real far. Read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have ordinance number 882 regarding community service fee. It says third reading, but we actually did the third reading at the last meeting, and this item was deferred from the June 15th meeting to this meeting. And so now it's open for discussion at this meeting. Alderman Vipersan?
Although I'm not against this at all, I think that this may be an inappropriate time, mid-season, when we know that others will be coming to us seeking assistance for their public service. I would like to make a motion that we postpone this indefinitely, at least until after budget talks, so we can see where we're at.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer this...
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. Okay, that will require the council bringing it back up again. Okay, is there a discussion on that motion? Alderman Kelly?
No, I agree with Alderman Vanpersen. I would like to point out that the, Mrs. Johnson pointed out that we have what projected a $900,000 surplus by the end of the year. Things are tracking along very nicely. However, we cut close to $450,000 out of the budget last year in anticipation of having a lean year, and I think in reality, we need to track along this year with a fee in place, and then bring it up again next year and see how we're doing. We cut $450,000 out of our budget that the department has requested for improvements in this city. I think we need to refund those and move forward for the rest of the year with our revenues that we have intact. But I'm not, I'm not for starting the wind down of the community service fee at this time. However, as much a surprise this may seem to some of the members of the council, I will support it if our revenues continue to be on the positive side. But I agree with you. Now is not the time.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Mosley?
Well, I would like to, I would like to see us go ahead and vote on it tonight. As Alderman Kelly accurately pointed out, we are doing really well this year, and I think we, you know, I think we need to give something back to the residents when we have a chance. I think we focus too much here in Maumell on revenues and spending, and trying to get more revenues and more spending as a council. That's kind of not, not my philosophy. And I think when we have a chance, we should, should cut it. $80,000 a year is not too bad to be cutting it. We, we could have, we could have paid for three years if we hadn't done an impulse approval of some fire changes in the fire methodology and that sort of thing about two weeks ago, so, or three weeks ago. So I think we need to, I think we need to, to go ahead and vote on this. And it's, it's not set in concrete. If we should have another downturn in the economy like we had in 2008, where we saw revenues tail off year in year, if we got in a jam like that, we could always stop the phase out. But as long as revenues are increasing, which they seem to be, I think we should try to, to go ahead and start phasing this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Lewis?
I concur. I think a vote tonight would be prudent. I do want to correct one thing, especially for those members that may be in the audience this evening. This would not be an immediate action. This would go into effect at the beginning of next year. So I share in, I think, Alderman Kelly's pragmatism, and I think, I absolutely know his sincerity about if trends continue, that we would come back and look at this. I believe that. I also believe that we have an outstanding, we have several outstanding commitments going back to the Maumell Forward Strategic Plan, which looks to modernize our revenue sources, to grow. That's the thing in this discussion that has been consistent, is when someone has their doubts about this, it is often, where will the money come up, you know, where will it be made back up? And there are three schools of thought there. You know, there is economic growth, which we know we need to grow commercially. There is spending reduction, which Alderman Mosley and I think are both quite in favor of, something we fought very hard for this year in the budget. And then the last thing is replacement revenue with other taxes or fees. I don't feel that there is an appetite for that at all right now, especially considering that we are trying to grow commercially. We're trying to do some things to attract to this area. One thought, just something to add out, and this came a few weeks ago, it was a piece of knowledge that I did not have. Faulkner County has some voluntary millages that are in place. They're small, they have a variety of different purposes. I don't particularly like the idea of putting anything in in addition to our taxes out there, but the voluntary millage would be an opt-in or opt-out sort of system. I did just some numbers, and this is just something to think about. Called the county treasurer today. Maumell has an assessment value of tax District 15 of about $396 million. So if you did a 2.5 mills, you would collect $990,000 would be the total take. How many people would pay that, you ask? In Faulkner County, they bring in about 8% of people that voluntarily pay. If we brought that in, it would be $79,200 a year. I happen to think, though, that knowing, I think, the reputation that public safety carries in this community, that our percentage would be higher. So 10% would bring in $99,000, 15% would bring in $148,000. That is something that could be worthwhile in our conversations going forward. I don't necessarily like the idea, because I think a lot of voluntary millages had a different purpose. However, we're trying to find, and as Alderman Mosley, I think, put it very well, we're trying to find a way to put relief on residents. And there are some residents that are on fixed incomes. There are some residents that are having a hard time paying their fees. That's another thing about this fee that makes it a very odd thing, is that we are the only municipality in Arkansas that has a community service fee. It's difficult to collect. We've proven that. Finance Department has done a much better job compared to where we were a year, two, three years ago. I'm happy and proud of that, but how long will that continue? How long will we continue to have this POA-style system in our city, which we're trying to grow based on that plan? We know where we're going, but we have to show, I think, another side of the commitment, that we're committed to spending, we're committing, or we're committing to giving money back to the residents, because remember, we've got that plan. We have three bond projects, now more, considering the others, but some that are two years, 269 days since we voted on them. I know it's not a fact that we like to dwell on, but ladies and gentlemen, it is the truth. So I think, I would like to see a vote this evening, and I think that it's been a fruitful discussion. If it doesn't pass this evening, I look forward to discussing it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lewis. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. If it's not an old saying, I'd like to coin an old saying. You know, one year, a trend does not make. Now, we are talking about tracking our revenues and looking at this again next year, and if things keep looking up, and I don't disagree with Alderman Kelly, I think we're on the same path, but we're going to use different mechanisms to get there. Just because... Just because our revenues are up this year, it doesn't say anything about two years from now, three years from now, five years from now. And I am concerned, I'll give you one example of many that we have discussed multiple times in budget meetings, for those that haven't been there, how about unfunded pension liabilities? There are, you can't put on all my fingers and toes, ears, you name it, how many cities in this country right now are virtually bankrupt because of unfunded pension liabilities? We are facing the same thing here, okay? Now, and we've really not addressed that in our city budget. It's something we're going to have to look at, and we probably need to start this coming year. So if we want to look at trends in our revenues, maybe we should use those trends to address what we know is going to hit us in the face. As we grow older, we're going to have more and more people that's going to start eating into those pensions. One of them is our chairman right now. You know, he won't be mayor forever, and he is going to draw a pension. That's part of his pipe. Now, and I'm not attacking that, I'm just saying, we've got to be realistic here. Now, and I'm all in to cutting expenses that are unnecessary out. But what expenses do we want to cut so that we can eliminate the service fee? And I don't care if it's one year or five years that it takes to cut it, we're still cutting our revenues out. What do we want to cut? Do we want to close down Willistine? That's an option, okay? Let me see, what else can we do? How ridiculous do we want to get to try to cut this service fee out? I don't like paying it any more than anybody else in this town. I do not like taxes. I go on record saying that. But we need something more than a potential trend, something more than a possibility that we're going to be able to replace those revenues, to keep this city sound, which we've always been. One way to do that, and what I would like to see personally, I'd like to see the taxpayers, the citizens, make that decision. Now, how can they make that decision? Taxes, okay? You want to get rid of the service fee? Fine. If the citizens want rid of it, let's put it on the ballot. If they're willing to do a tax increase to get rid of it, fine, let's get rid of it. Let's get rid of it. Let them make the decision. It's their money. But I'm afraid we're going to really get smacked down in two or three years if we arbitrarily just sit up here and start speculating on how we can replace this revenue without something more solid. Okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm always proud that Alderman Lewis and Saunders speaks first, because then I don't have to say much. You know, I am one of the four supporters of this, so I'm going to hold true to it and say, they've really given the argument, so I won't renew that, okay? But I, you know, the time is never right. I've lived in Mammell for 23 years. It was here when I got here, and it may well be here 23 years more. But it's never seemed like the right time to do that. It wasn't the right time when I got married. It wasn't the right time when I had my first and second child. It just seems to come along. And there is no money, and how in the name of the Holy Father are you going to pay for it? I don't know. But sometimes it works out. And I believe that we, as a city, have to take a stand to do something that is, we can do it if we want to do it. As someone said a few minutes ago, think a whole lot more reasons why they shouldn't do it than regarding the fireworks than what we should do. But it's a small commitment. It's $1 a month per year on that item, right? So it isn't anything that we're giving away the whole financial basis of our city. I would vote for it, and I will do my best to back it up. I don't know what I can do, but I'll be there trying to do something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Holt. Alderman Scott?
I sat through the budget meetings last year as an unvoting member, and I saw a number of people turned away from the table and told, "Come back during the year and justify this, and if you can justify it, you'll get it." So there are things out there that people felt they needed at budget time, and one of the individuals has come back and justified it, and we voted for it. And there are a couple of other individuals that are waiting in the wings for their opportunity to present their justification for items that had been cut out of the budget. Now, even though I agree with the reduction of the community service fee over time, I would like to wait until we go through another budget cycle. I would like to set that money aside. And if we can manage a budget that isn't to the detriment of ultimately our citizens, then we can easily bring this back up in January and vote on it at that time with that money set aside, if we still feel comfortable with it. So I am in favor of tabling this for the time being.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to point out that, again, I've said this before, I think there is some confusion out there among our citizens on what constitutes community service fee. The community service fee, I believe, is $6 a month, about 20 cents a day per family. That augments the general budget, and it says fire and police on your bill. The rest of your bill, which is about $68 a month, is your trash pickup. And there's a lot of people out there that have that confusion, thinking their whole $68 bill is going to go away when the community service fee does. That's inaccurate. But what it could do is, over five years, cost the city $540,000 a year. It was reduced $2 three years ago, Mayor? Four years ago?
I don't know the exact date.
Four. So that, when they took $2.25 out of it, it, to date, probably would have paid for our new fire truck. That money mounts up very quickly. I am for eliminating it as long as we have the revenues there to replace it. What I do not want to see is our city, and he is right, we've got to fund the retirement budget. There are things we need to take care of for our city. We are very fiscally sound. The auditor just told us that. And we have been for many years, but I want to keep it that way. We don't need to be in a position to give back 20 cents a day to each family and then find ourselves four or five years down the road saying, "Oh, by the way, we're going to do a millage," or we're going to have to put a sales tax out there and have the people vote on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're all in agreement that we want to reduce the city fee and that we want to get away from this POA-style of revenue. I think what we're needing to do is to really figure out a budget for it. So I think tabling this is going to give us the opportunity to really look at it within our budget process. And like Alderman Scott said, set aside the money or prepare that money, including even looking at pension prepareness. And then, then we can set a plan forward from there. I don't think that this is going to go away. I think everybody is in agreement that we want this to go away. I think we're just trying to get the timing right. And I know that the timing is never right to have children, to get married, to all those things that happen in life. But I think if you plan, sometimes you can be prepared for it. And that's what I want to do. I want to plan for that during our next budget meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. All right, the motion on the floor is to defer this ordinance indefinitely. What I want to point out is, depending on when you bring it back up, the ordinance is probably going to have to be amended if that motion passes. When you bring it back up, just because of the effective dates that are on there and some things like that. So it might, and I'll defer to Mr. City Attorney, but that might make a substantial change, that it goes back to three readings again when it actually comes back up. But I just wanted to point that out if this motion is tabled. Because basically, one, Section 2 says effective date is January 1, 2016. So if you brought it up in January 3 or 4, or whenever our first meeting was being, then you're making it retro-effective. So just to point that out. Alderman Lewis?
Very good point to have made, Mr. Mayor. And I see, you know, no specific reason that we have to go back to this exact model. You know, we could craft a new ordinance at that point, so, but again, it's very much appreciated that you pointed that out.
Okay. There's no other discussion on the motion, the motion to defer this ordinance indefinitely? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
I think I have five yeses and three nos.
Let's have a roll call, though.
Roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah. Alderman Holt?
No.
Alderman Vapersen?
Yes.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
No.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Votes five to three. The motion is approved to defer this ordinance indefinitely. Okay. Moving on to the new business, the first item is tree board appointments. We actually have three vacancies on the tree board, and we actually had two applicants that turned in. And it's Ms. Ann Baker and Mr. Max Baker have both turned in resumes for this. Mr. Max Baker is here tonight, but Ms. Baker could not be here, as I understand it. And so, but they are here, but you have a copy of their resumes, and so it's up to the council, but I could have Mr. Baker step to the podium and tell us a little bit about himself and maybe a little bit about his wife before y'all vote on him, if y'all would like me to do that. Or she may not want me to do that, I don't know, so.
Put him in a tough spot.
Mr. Baker, if you would, please come forward.
One never speaks for their wife. It's not a wise move. I didn't get to be this old, so. We frankly were not much aware of the tree board till the other evening at the Friends of the Lake Willistine group meeting. At that time, a couple of members, two of the members of the tree board were there. They asked, and at that time, they asked for applicants. I went to the city website. The instructions are very complex. You fill out an application, which does not exist. Only your resume. So just from that standpoint, my wife and I are both retired teachers. She retired from the Little Rock School System and then from our church, where she was the newsletter editors. I'm retired from the University of Arkansas for Medical Sciences. I spent 40 years in the radiology department there. Our knowledge of trees are simply that we like trees. We like the neighborhood. We live on Lake Willistine. Our property backs up to Lake Willistine. And from that standpoint, we are interested in the city. We've lived here about 13 years now, and we are interested in the city. And the aspects of the city include the trees that we like very much. So I can answer any questions.
Okay. Alderman Scott?
Sir, I was on the tree board myself. It was a wonderful experience, and I didn't have a lot of expertise in trees, just a love of trees like you do. So I hope that we can welcome you to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. Alderman Vapersen?
I think his knowledge of trees is vast and wide. And I'd like to make a motion that we receive, Max, and as our new tree board members.
Okay, your motion is to nominate, or to approve both of them to the tree board, is that correct?
Before he gets sick, he can doctor it.
Yeah.
I'm not that kind of doctor.
Oh, the doctor, the doctor edit.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Ms. Ann Baker, Mr. Max Baker to the Mammell Tree Board. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve, Mr. Baker.
We should note that we have one more spot.
We still have one more spot, and we have a large crowd in the audience here tonight. So if anybody wants to serve on a tree board committee, we would appreciate hearing from you. You can turn in your application to Clerk Clausen via email or through our website. You can find that, or you can drop it off by City Hall here. And the application is just give us a letter that you want to serve in that position and tell us a little bit about yourself. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 885 regarding the fee for recuperating Pulaski County jail costs. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 885, an ordinance increasing the fee for recuperating costs associated with the Pulaski County Jail and incarcerating certain persons and for other purposes.
Right now, we pay over $50,000 to Pulaski County to house individuals that are arrested by the Police Department in a Pulaski County Regional Detention Facility. And we collect a $5 fee to do that right now. And that brings in about $4,300, somewhere in that range. That's what we collected in 2014, that $5 fee. And so by state law, we can raise that fee to $20. And that's to be paid by persons who are found guilty, plead guilty, or plead no loc contend there to a criminal or traffic offense in the court. So it's not imposed on all the citizens. It's only on the ones that plead guilty or found guilty of a traffic or criminal offense in court. So that would bring in, we could bring in about $16,000 to $17,000 a year that would help offset some of the $50,000. So this is a way that we're looking for a revenue offset in case the $1 is passed to eliminate on the community service fee. But this money actually goes to pay for the incarceration at the Pulaski County Jail. And Attorney Norris actually pointed this out this year, that we could increase this and still be within state statutes. So if there's no discussion on that, and this is on first reading, so it'll be on second reading at the next item. Did you need to add anything, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. And you can actually look, there's, we got it at the back of the ordinance, we've got the city jail fees by month that we collected in 2012, 13, 14, and through May of this year, or April of this year, I'm sorry. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious question, is this money specifically earmarked for that purpose?
It is.
It's not general fund money that?
Well.
I mean, but.
It has to be used for incarcerating prisoners, but it goes into the general fund.
Okay, but it is earmarked. Okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have a separate fund that says this money's going to go to the Pulaski County Fund, but it's in our general fund, but it's accounted for. And since we're paying $50,000 right now, and we're only collecting about $4,000, we're definitely spending that money for incarcerating prisoners. All right, if there's no other questions on ordinance number 885, we'll move on to ordinance number 886 regarding the requirements for a conditional use permit. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 886, an ordinance amending the Mammell City Code to remove the requirement that applicants for a conditional use permit must submit a site plan and landscape plan in specific situations.
Okay, this is an item that went through the Planning Commission at their last meeting and was approved by the, or not approved, but it was passed to come forward to the City Council with a due-pass recommendation, with six voted in favor of that, I believe, was that right? And one absent, yes. And Mr. Attorney, City Attorney can answer the questions, since he drafted it, I'll let him do that. Alderman Mosley?
As I understand this, it looks like the only thing really will change is if the business looking for it is already, say, in an existing location, sort of like that daycare center over by Pizza Hut, where each time somebody leaves there and wants to do a daycare, they've got a conditional use, and it would be ridiculous to do a site plan and all that sort of thing. Is that, that's mainly what we're trying to do here, right?
I think, that's a good idea of what we're targeting. I think there already is a site plan and landscape plan for that building. And if there already is one, they can reuse the existing one if they're not making changes. But there's some old buildings that were not formally reviewed, and so someone's moving into it, and we're requiring them to hire someone to go out and draw pictures of what already exists to give to the city. So it's just designed to eliminate something that's unnecessary.
And anything that is a new locale or something that's going to be changed on the outside, it looks like it would still... And anything that is, is a new locale or something that's going to be changed on the outside, it looks like it would still, they'd still have to submit those signs?
Yes, so if they're changing the, the footprint of the building, that would need to come. If they're adding or removing parking or changing the landscape, then they'd need that landscape plan.
I, I have no problem with this, I don't think, thank you.
Okay, yeah, and it, and it's come up several times and that's exactly why, it keeps coming up in the older existing buildings that were built before Malmell was a city and required a lot of these site plans and everything. Okay, there's no other discussion on ordinance number 886, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is the Resolution Number 2015-26 Supporting a Legislative Audit of Malmell Water Management. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Malmell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2015-26, a resolution supporting a legislative audit of Malmell Water Management and for other purposes.
I do have a public comment card on this item. Does the council wish to hear from that before we enter into discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. George Ritter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am here to discuss why, on this particular matter, Alderman Preston Lewis should be disqualified from any discussion or voting on anything to do with Malmell Water Management. I am presenting this information, I have newly received through Freedom of Information Act documents. I have a number of them, I'll give copies to Mr. Claussen for the council, City Attorney and Mayor. And they have all of the information. I just want to read, and I will not make any substantive comments, I just want to read excerpts from some of these emails. Primarily, they are from officials of Malmell Water Management and Mr. Lewis. If you all will recall, a little over a year ago, Malmell Water Management was in the process of forming a public water authority. And so, the first, the first email has to do with that. They had a little hiccup with North Little Rock Water Works. And on May the 21st, Alderman Lewis wrote to Barry Heller, who's the general manager of Malmell Water. And he says, "Below is a draft of an email to Mark Williams, who's the North Little Rock official. I have not sent. I would like to state, start the process of working through this impasse to facilitate our continued movement toward establishment of, of a PWA." And so, Mr. Heller responded, and he said, here's what he said. "My opinion on you contacting Mr. Wilkins or anyone else at North Little Rock to help facilitate this process is that is a good idea, but I think you should wait until after Mike, you know, there's another meeting." And then he asked for comments from other Malmell Water Commissioners. And one of them did comment, and that was Ralph Kearney. And he emailed everybody and he says, here's what he said. "I believe Preston has the best of intentions and desires like all of us to have the transition to the PWA go as smooth, smooth and quickly as possible. However, with regards to him reaching out to his fellow, fellow in North Little Rock, Alderman, my thoughts are figuratively speaking that we should quote, 'Hold this card in our hand and play it if needed later,' end quote. A lot of politics involves quote favors, end quote. We do not need for Preston to quote, 'Oh, one yet.'" Okay, so that was on, that email was on May the 22nd. Shortly thereafter, Malmell Water Commissioner Mary Payton wrote the following. This was at 11:52 in the morning, and I, I bring these times up, you'll see the context in a minute. She says to all, basically all of the, it's addressed to Alderman Lewis and the various Malmell Water officials. It said, "Might be a good idea for Preston to do some damage control in regarding, in regard to the negativity Mosley has dumped on the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. I think the commission should know that Mosley is not speaking for the council. Mosley's on a mission to prevent the changeover to the PWA. He and Mark Lowery want it stopped because they think they can get whatever they, they want through legislative session next year." And then, in the midst of this, and I, I should mention, Mr. Lewis sent another email. This was right before Ms. Payton's email. He says, "Thanks for the feedback. I will certainly hold until we have a little more direction. Thank you for everyone for what you're doing. I am so grateful that we are all pulling on the same rope. Aside from some static, from some mis, mischievous ropes, I think most people of Soundline agree this transition is a positive thing for customers." So, then, going back to Ms. Payton's email, that was on, at about 11:52 AM on the 22nd. At 9:21 PM on the same day, Mr. Lewis writes to Randy Young, he's the executive director of ANRC. And he expresses his support for the PWA. And then he says, "I'm aware that you or Mr. Chandler have been contacted by one of my fellow Aldermen, Steve Mosley. Alderman Mosley and I have different objectives as it relates to Malmell Water Management. He has called for an approach that would publicly elect board members for MWM, a decision I feel would overly politicize the operation of our utility and have negative consequences. Since the spring of 2013, he has boycotted the meetings of MSID 500 and has excluded himself from the process out of protest. Nevertheless, he has sought to stymie efforts in modernizing MWM. This is an unfortunate approach and one that a majority of the city council does not share. In short, this is my opinion that Alderman Mosley is acting unilaterally and with personal motives that aren't reflective of the city of Malmell. And I would say, this is, might be something that you all would consider if you get on the wrong side of an issue." Then move forward to June 2015. We are in the midst of this present rates issue with Malmell Water. And on June the 1st, Mr. Lewis wrote, the attorney for Malmell Water. And he says, "I've been thinking over the situation with the repeal of," and he says 271, that's ordinance 271. "I also need to inform you of a conversation I had with City Attorney Norris on Friday afternoon. Mr. Norris telephoned me, telephoned, informed me that Alderman Mosley sent an email stating he believes there's a conflict of interest with respect to any vote I might have on this issue, given my status as a PWA board member. He said he believes in retrospect that it was a mistake to appoint a member of the city council to that position. I asked City Attorney Mosley if his opinion had changed. And previously, he said he doesn't believe a, a conflict, it says contact, conflict exists. And then he consulted with other attorneys from the municipal league. It was Mr. Norris's suggestion that I tender my resignation to the PWA Board, removing any doubt about this issue. I, I told him I had concerns and would have to think it over. And so, now he's bringing it up to date with the Malmell Water Attorney. Says, "This leads me to think about MSID's 500's overall strategy. It is my suggestion you consider the approach of asking Mr. Heller to, to, to encourage the council to table a vote on the repeal of ordinance 271." And then he has three reasons. And, and one of them is, the catalyst for this repeal discussion is because the rate hike is imminent. If the repeal ordinance fails, then MSID 500 goes into the rate discussion, quote, wounded, and the possibility of sitting voting, voting down the rate increase is elevated. And then he talks about the conflict, his personal conflict. "As much as I am skeptical about the spirit of the conflict of interest questioned regarding myself, I think it would be damaging for all concerned if I muddy the waters by not addressing this issue. I can either recuse on all votes, parent, in which case I'm counted as an automatic no, or I can tender my resignation to the PWA." And here's the, I think, the clinching language. "My primary concern there is would my resignation negatively impact, impact the PWA in terms of bond offering? If that's the case, then I will hold fast. Under no circumstances do I want my actions to jeopardize the utility. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I believe the evidence is clear. Mr. Mosley, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Lewis should be disqualified from any discussions regarding MWM."
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. And I gave you more than three minutes, so, but, so.
Very generous.
Yeah. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I may have a question for him in a minute, but I would first like to direct a question to City Attorney Norris. There are three or four reasons under, by which a person may recruit, recuse themselves from a vote on, on an ordinance or on a city council issue. I expect that, in this case, that one of those three or four criteria would have to be applicable in order for this to happen.
I'm not sure what criteria, are you referring to three specific criteria?
If I wanted to recuse my, if I didn't want to vote on an issue, I have to meet one of three or four criteria.
You would have to show that there was a conflict of, or you don't have to show that, but you'd have to believe there was a conflict of interest. Or, as I mentioned at another meeting, that the positions were incompatible with one another.
Okay. And, and as I remembered, I think there were three or four specific ways of stating this, but I won't go there. We're, we're saying here, I think, that Alderman Lewis should not be allowed to vote on this issue, is that correct?
That was Mr. Ritter's stance, that's not our stance. The, the, the council, the council nominated Alderman Lewis and Alderman Johnson to serve on the PWA. So, if, if, if there's a conflict, then the council created that conflict, I mean, in, in that instance. Now, the, the, the plan was that it would be a temporary situation till the, the PWA was basically stood up. They needed something real quick to fill five commissioners and they used the existing three commissioners on the water commission to serve three of those. And they asked for, since the PWA requires five commissioners, they asked for two from the council. The goal is to, if the PWA gets stood up, and when it's completely stood up, then Alderman Lewis and former Alderman Johnson will resign and citizens would be put in that position. Now, the question is right now, is I don't even know that the PWA is going to be, take over as the custodian or the, the owner basically of what is now MSID 500, ultimately Malmell Water Management. Because if there's a merger that goes through with Central Arkansas Water, that's a mute point. And so, I mean, I'm not going to speak to the legal issues, I will leave that to the City Attorney. But I do think the council put Alderman Lewis and former Alderman Johnson, if he had still on the council in that position to where there could have been a conflict by nominating them. Maybe, you know, at the time, we thought it was a short-term fix and they would be off of it by now, but they're still on it, so.
I, I guess it concerns me is, are we technically and legally in bounds to do this?
To do what?
To disavow Alderman Lewis of his ability to.
Point of order.
Maybe I misunderstand the.
That's okay, point of order. It's very clear in Roberts' Rules of Parliamentary Procedure that a member cannot be compelled to offer an abstention. I'll make some comments in a moment to this, but that's part of the parliamentary procedure.
I'm, I'm just a little confused by all this, so.
Okay, well, and typically, typically what happens when someone recuses from something, it's their choice, they recuse from that. And, and I think Alderman Lewis is correct. I mean, there's not a point where you can say you can't vote on this. Alderman Lewis makes that decision. And whether he enters in the discussion of it and, and then votes on it, that's up to him, whether there's a perceived conflict of interest or not. And if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, please correct me.
But if he does decide that, that there is, and he decides to do this, are we technically and legally, is that legally permissible?
If he decides to do, to discuss and vote on the issue?
Yeah.
Is he, I think the mayor's correct, there's no way that we can force someone to not vote on the issue. It could jeopardize the validity of a vote on the issue, but there's no mechanism in place for the city to stop one Alderman from voting.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm, it just seems to me, because I've been sitting here for a lot of years, and it seems to me that it's only under special circumstances that you're allowed to recuse yourself from a vote. And I'm wondering if, if he has that ability at all.
If he has the ability to?
Yeah.
So, at the, one of the prior meetings, I talked about whether or not I thought Alderman Lewis had to recuse himself. And the determination that I came up with at that time, based on what I knew, was that it was, it was a gray issue and that he could make that determination. Now, being handed all this, I'm trying to digest it and see how, if at all, this changes that analysis. I don't think it does with regards to our ordinance on conflict of interest, which deals with a personal profit. I don't see that changing. It does make me wonder about the doctrine of incompatibility. And if you'll recall, I mentioned that's where a person is serving essentially two different masters in that they're, they're competing with one another in such a way that the person can't represent both equally as well. And as I was listening to Mr. Ritter read through some of these Alderman, or some of these emails, which I haven't seen until just now, it sounded clear that Alderman Lewis had a position on the issue, which is not itself a stance, if you will, on the issue, which is not itself a conflict. But then, on the last email, the part that Mr. Ritter brought to my attention makes me think that the positions may actually be incompatible, based on his sort of waffling about, "I, I, this is what I think I should do, but I won't do it if, you know, it would negatively impact one of the boards." So, that's the way I'm leaning at the moment, having not had a chance to review these prior to this moment.
I think I better understand it, but, but I'm not an attorney, so I can't think like that. Okay, thank you.
I guess the short answer is that, based on this, I'm leaning more toward that the positions may actually be incompatible. But then again, it, yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. One question for the City Attorney, if you recuse yourself, does that count as a no vote?
Yes.
Okay. Second point is, with what the mayor pointed out, I, I do believe that Alderman Lewis is sincere in his beliefs on what he's trying to do with the PWA and for the city. And I think we have put him in a bad position. Perhaps we need to vote as a council to abolish his membership on that board.
Well, I, I don't know that the, the city.
Didn't we, didn't we vote, we actually.
The city nominated him to the, to the PWA, and then they, I believe they accept the nomination. But I, I think the city could ceremoniously withdraw the nomination, but I think that's.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, in the best interest of fellow Alderman, I, I think we have done him a disservice. I'm just wondering what the, what the answer is to undo it. I'm just wondering what the, what the answer is to undo it. Because the PWA has been tabled.
Well, the PWA is in existence. They just haven't met, uh, in several months.
Met one time.
They've met one time, and...
So maybe I need to have Alderman Lewis explain to us what the PWA is doing.
Could I just clarify my remarks? My, the bulk of this material is not about PWA, whether he's on the PWA or not. That, to me, is not the source of the conflict. The source of the conflict is the substance of his communications, which shows a state of mind that he is basically, in my opinion, in league with Maumel Water. And in my opinion, that is what disqualifies him.
Well, and I, I don't think that is a conflict of interest. We have, we have aldermen and people, elected officials, that take a stance on something on, on a steady time. Now, I, you know, it's, it's, it talks about financial interests, is what it talks about mainly, when it talks about conflict of interest or whether you can benefit. Uh, and a, a personal opinion of how something should be or whatever, I don't think is necessarily a conflict of interest, but that's my opinion. Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I think, going back to what I said a couple of meetings ago, I think we did make a mistake in, in putting, you know, nominating somebody from the city council. And I think it was right, we didn't realize it was going to last as long as it has, but, uh, I, I hadn't seen these emails before tonight either, so I haven't had a chance to read them, but it does sound like, um, I would prefer, look at it in two ways. One is you're either, you're either a passive, uh, person sitting on a PWA board that hasn't truly been activated yet, or you're actively representing, uh, the affiliated entity and trying to get it there. And to me, these emails, if anything, shows that, that Alderman Lewis is actively representing MWM and, and doing all that he can to, in other words, he's almost, he's acting as, as a commissioner almost. And, uh, so to me, that does, that does present, uh, I think, incompatibility. I don't see where he's making any money off the deal, but, uh, I would, I would strongly suggest that you recuse. Uh, and I guess we cannot force him to recuse. Is that correct, City Attorney Norris?
I'm unaware of any way that that can happen. Correct.
And do you think he should recuse? Can you give that opinion? Yeah, I know you're leaning, but...
Well, all, so I, you saw in the, the email that I, I told, uh, Alderman Lewis that the easiest way would be to just either recuse or to resign, because then it, it removes the muddying of any waters. If it's a gray area, there's no bright line for that. So the safest answer, the lawyerly answer, would be if there's even a cloud on whether or not you should recuse, it's probably in the best interest to recuse.
I would, I would agree with that statement. Uh, say there is, I'd say there is a cloud there. Um, and I would encourage you to recuse strongly.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Vapresan?
Mayor, I know we got a meeting in fifteen and a half minutes supposedly, and I know Alderman Lewis wants to talk about this. I, there's a good deal, I know Alderman Lewis, he's not going to be involved in anything that he's not going to have a strategic plan for.
Absolutely.
It's not going to happen.
That's right.
It's not going to happen. So if he recuses himself, it's a no vote for the resolution of the audit, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
If he's in line with MWM and wants them to become PWA quicker, guess how he's going to vote?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vapresan.
I'm, I'm thinking ahead to the hearing, too.
Alderman Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, reminds me of, uh, I had an uncle, Keith Lewis, who lived in Clarksville. He ran for state representative in Johnson County, which was predominantly Democrat. And my uncle ran as a Democrat against what was, at the time, an unusual situation of a Republican representative in Johnson County. C.W. Nelson was his name. My uncle, much against the advice of my father, decided to challenge Mr. Nelson on, uh, very tertiary, kind of minor issues. I'm always reminded of what Mr. Nelson said at a community debate. He said, "Mr. Lewis, you are struggling for an issue." And that's, that's, I think, as I see it here. This is, uh, twenty-five minutes now has turned into the Preston Lewis Show. A series of emails, you know, we like to hear public comment that shows purpose as to why you would want to do a forensic audit of a organization. I'd love to do a forensic audit of the federal government myself. Uh, but, uh, this chain of emails, I think it shows at one time, I think some of these were prior to that position. What is that position? If you look at the, um, financial disclosure that we fill out, interim board member of a public water authority, of which has no assets, no liabilities, has no governing function, has met once. Do I have a stake in all these things? You bet. The stake is to try to lend something positive to an issue. I made this point before, I have attended twenty-seven of the last twenty-eight water meetings. That is time away from a beautiful wife and a three-year-old daughter to learn about an issue that affects everyone. I came into this very much critic of the utility. I still have issues, I still see mistakes in the past, but my concern is where we are going forward. I'm not concerned with some snowy meeting in nineteen ninety-five, or, uh, past misunderstandings, innuendos, emails back and forth. This shows that I'm interested in a system which was going to allow for two representatives from the city versus the outmoded system of a suburban improvement district. Those are the things I've learned at attending those meetings. If, you know, you want to get into conflict of interest, I will say no names, but Mr. Ritter, the lawyer, has represented two people around this issue that are in this room tonight in three different court proceedings. So are those people doing his interest? I don't care. What I care about is doing something better for our community and making decisions that move us in a positive direction. And I'll say one more thing. Barry Heller was somebody that I was very critical of back in two thousand twelve. And I've actually found him to be gruff. As Terry Jones, uh, once put it, he needs to go to charm school. Barry would admit that. Uh, but I've also found him to be someone to work with, uh, towards substantive things. One of the things we've worked on, Mr. Heller, myself, Mr. Benzinger, who you will hear from at the meeting, is trying to keep the possibilities open with Central Arkansas Water. I've had discussions with them, I've had sit-down meetings with them. Is that a conflict? No, that's me being a pretty doggone good alderman and being involved in issues. So I think, in fact, I know I bring a good deal of knowledge to this issue, and I am making decisions that are in the best for Maumel. This premise that, do I stand with Maumel Water? You have to accept the premise that Maumel Water is the root of all evil. I don't accept that premise. I actually believe that there are people that work for that utility that want something good for this city. So in any discussion, and this is something that I said at budget meetings to one of our fellow aldermen, if we're going to work on this substantively, we have to agree that Maumel Water Management has the right to exist. Now, they may not exist much longer. They may be merged with Central Arkansas Water. Could be a lot of good things to come from that, and I'm glad, because it's things that I have been working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lewis. All right. Any more discussion on Resolution two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six? Not, I need a motion, or we need to move on?
I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion, we accept that, uh, resolution. Uh, the, uh...
Twenty fifteen dash twenty-six.
The, uh, Representative Lowry has said that that's, that's helpful in going ahead and getting that legislative audit, and I think we should go ahead and, and proceed with that. So I'd make that motion, and we proceed. Thank you.
Seconded.
Have a motion and second to approve Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six. Are there discussion on the motion? Alderman Mosley, your light's on. Was it on to make the motion, or did you have...
It was on there to make the motion.
Okay. All right. Alderman Saunders?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it seems to me that at Fourth Fest, there was one or more people that were collecting, um, signatures about, um, a, an, an audit of Maumel Water Management. If that is true, I'd sure like to hear the results, or how many people signed it, or And that's just a public statement for whoever was involved that might be hearing.
State your name and address for the record.
Oh, I will. I'm Belinda Harris Ritter. I live at one oh three Hibiscus. And, um, it's my understanding that those petitions, have they been turned in to Clerk Clausen? All right, well, they're being turned in at the public hearing. We haven't gotten to the public hearing yet, and that petition had nothing to do with the legislative audit, and that's why they haven't been turned in yet. But I will answer your question. Many people who came up and talked at that booth about what we were talking about didn't live in Maumel, and we only allowed people to sign those petitions if they lived in Maumel. Okay? There are thirty-nine signatures that were turning in. Those are thirty-nine people, many of whom didn't know anything about this until they came and talked to us. They didn't know anything about the water rates being raised. Okay? Because it hasn't really gotten out in the public. Our sterling members of the media have done little on that. Okay? That answer your question? All right. We just encourage you to do more. We know you have competing interests and things you have to cover.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Ritter, thank you.
I'm leaving.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, to approve Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six. Is there any more discussion on that? Alderman Scott?
I know. Just want to move on. But I was just wondering if we have received the full, um, financial report from two thousand fourteen?
We have not.
Or review?
We have not.
So I just, you know, until we're able to look at that, um, you know, I really can't express an opinion on how believable it may be. I mean, I'm sure it's, it's going to be great, but I don't know, because I haven't seen it.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Scott. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor in Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six, please, in approving Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six, please signify, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
I had, I'm not sure. I had five or six yeses and two nos, I believe. Do a roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Mosley?
I'm a yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Lewis?
No.
Alderman Scott?
No.
Alderman Vapresan?
Yes.
And Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Yeah, five-three.
Five-three. The, the resolution passes. Okay. Uh, real quickly, we do have another meeting that we're going to try to start in five minutes. Under Mayor's comments, I was going to do a recap of Fourth Fest. I will tell you that we had a great event, and, uh, a lot of people at the parade, a lot of people watching the cardboard boat race, the fireworks show drew the largest crowd inside and outside the park. It was a very good event. Also want to mention that there is an open forum for our development that, um, Jeffrey Sandinggravel is proposing. It's on the Planning Commission agenda. That will be July the eighth from eleven-thirty to one PM, American Pie Pizza. And then also, and, and just to follow up with, uh, what Ms. Barra said earlier, just to let you know, that the police had twenty-eight total calls on July the fourth and fifth regarding fireworks. Five calls were made during legal hours to discharge fireworks. So twenty-three calls were made sometime outside of the hours that it's legally, uh, you, the legal ability to discharge fireworks in Maumel. And I will tell you that a gentleman came to see me at my house yesterday over this issue and was very upset, and because of debris in his yard and on his house, he said they shot fireworks for over three hours in front of his house. And, uh, and the shooters claimed they did not have to clean it up. The city would take care of it. So, uh, so that's what they told them when they complained to them. So just to let you know, that's, uh, what I heard, so. Uh, and now, moving on, the Planning Commission report. Alderman Holt covered that meeting?
Yes, sir. Uh, the meeting was on July, uh, June the twenty-fifth, regular meeting, called a order by Mr. Mike Fisher at six-twenty-eight. Uh, as, so far as I know, all members were present that I was aware of. There were call for announcements, Jim Nary stressed the Fourth July Fest. Uh, the minutes to the previous meeting were, um, approved. There were two items on the, on the agenda. One was the Village of San Luis, tract A preliminary plat. Um, comments were made. Uh, it was asked for a motion to approve, and it was approved. The other, one, one was a proposal, promote, proposed amendment to Maumel City Code, section ninety-four dash one oh one. Um, Jim Nary stated staff recommendations for a due pass. Uh, it was seconded, and it was passed, and, uh, meeting was adjourned at six forty.
Thank you, Alderman Holt. Next item is Alderman's comments. Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, also, there was, uh, you had mentioned, uh, Jeffrey Sandinggravel, we're going to have that, uh, meeting on, uh, Wednesday at American Pie at eleven-thirty. I think that's also going to be a subject of the Planning Commission Subcommittee meeting on the following night at five-thirty. Would that be correct?
That is correct. That's what I said, it was on the Planning Commission's agenda, so...
All right, and it is, uh, and it is an open meeting. It is a meeting that's open to the public, the Subcommittee, in case anybody wants to go to that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, I wanted to ask City Attorney very quickly, uh, there was a, a letter received, uh, stating that we probably would need to reset a, an MWM hearing, uh, since they've changed their rate, uh, increase amount. Uh, and I would like to ask the City Attorney to go on record as, as kind of stating his opinion on that, if we should or should not.
I think the, the city's, uh, received a new proposed rate increase and should set a public hearing on that. Yes.
Okay. So, so the meeting that we're about to have was actually for the old rate increase. Do we need to set a new one?
I don't know that, I think y'all could set a new one, or you could just have it at this meeting. The public notice that was, uh, posted did not, uh, refer to a specific rate amount increase. So I think the prior notice serves as the notice for the meeting to be held after this meeting, if the council wishes that to be the case.
Those, those are your thoughts? That's fine with me.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Scott?
This seems so unimportant in the scheme of things, but two new baby deer have been born on the two-lane road of, uh, South-North Odom, and they are crossing the road because they don't know any better, and I'm just imploring people not to feed them at their homes, because you're luring them to their deaths. So please, beware.
And where is it?
On the two-lane, where Odom turns into the two-lane, on the south end primarily. Yeah.
Lake Valley?
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. Alderman Vapresan?
Want to mention, it's good to have Alderman Saunders back in his chair.
Yes, he is.
I see you here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I just wanted to thank, uh, City of Maumel for covering the cost of service who were able to attend the municipal league convention. It was so beneficial, uh, and there's so much wisdom and knowledge to be gained by going, and I really appreciate that, appreciate having breakfast and lunch with fellow aldermen, city officials, and just get to good to know each other on a, on a personal level. One, one phrase that stuck with me was this. They said, he said this, and I don't remember what, what session it was, he said, you need to remember something. He said, "City officials, what you do is political. It's not personal."
Thank you, Alderman Vapresan. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to, uh, thank Mrs. Thompson for presenting an excellent financial report. I watched the video. Uh, sorry I had to miss the actual meeting, but, uh, I really do appreciate it. She answered all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley?
I just wanted to thank our City Attorney for being alert and modernizing a lot of our ordinances and things like that. I have a feeling you're the one that found the, uh, and came up with the idea, perhaps on the, uh, jail fee, and that... jail fee, and that's always helpful, and I'd like to thank you for thinking of these things.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Lewis?
I'll be quick, just wanted to say, we've got a lot of positive comments about the fireworks. Great job by Parks and Rec and everybody involved.
Thank you very much. All right. If there's no other Alderman's comments, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I got ahold of the ever-elusive professional-registered parliamentarian, who I'm told there's only two of them in the state. I've been in discussions regarding having him provide a workshop, and he told me, he already has a class on parliamentary persuasion that focuses on motions and procedure, along with persuasive speaking techniques, to accomplish what you're trying to do in a parliamentary system. If that's something you all are interested in, I can get a quote, it didn't seem too unreasonable of a price. He did have questions about what specifically the council would be trying to gain from a class on parliamentary procedure, and I didn't have a good answer for that, so.
I think we're long-winded enough.
And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just one item, as you found at your desk, also a letter from Mr. Doyle Kennedy that is about Maumell Water Management. A long letter, but I'm sure you could ask him any questions about it when you get a chance. But both of those items that were laying at your desk, the letter and the paperclip portion, were from Mr. Kennedy regarding some, I guess, information he'd gotten from Maumell Water Management. And we received that very late Thursday afternoon, and that's why we handed it out today. He asked that to be given to the city board, so that's what we did. Then you see a lot of FYIs on your packet, and we do have a public hearing that is supposed to start at seven-thirty, so we're a few minutes late. What I've been told is downstairs is already full of people, because we had more area downstairs, so what I want to ask everybody to do is to move downstairs to the Maumell Senior Wellness Center, which is right below this room. There's some stairs right here.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't realize we're going to do that.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
We just carried it over.
Alderman Mosley, excuse me?
Didn't realize we were going to move our location downstairs.
Well, it accommodates more people, and that room's already full down there. We couldn't get a hundred more people in here.
We're going to be taping that meeting?
We are not going to be taping that meeting.
I would have liked to have had it taped.
Sorry, we don't have those accommodations. We don't have those accommodations in the south room either.
Can someone film it on an iPhone or something?
We need a, we need to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Should we take our cameras?
Yes, if you would.
I'm afraid somebody ripped it off if we adjourned.
They're getting them, they're getting Courtney in there.